All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining. Sorry about our technical difficulties. I want to welcome you all to the January Board Meeting Finance New Orleans. We're going to go ahead and get started, so we'll call the meeting's order.
Roll call Chair Stephen Smith, Vice Chair Giselle Johnson-Banks,
Present.
Secretary Treasurer G. Wade Rootin,
Present.
Board Member Charles Brown, Board Member Edgar Chase IV,
Present.
Board Member Andrenika Morris,
Present.
Board Member Hunter Thomas,
Yeah.
A quorum is present.
Thank you, Elizabeth. All right. Do we have any old business? None? I guess the only old business is to formally welcome everybody again and say Happy New Year. I'll be here on the 19th, but Happy New Year, everyone. Hope you had a good holiday season. And we're looking forward to better things in 2021, hopefully. We'll see. Let's move on to new business. Green Coast Enterprises' presentation. Damon, you want to introduce?
Yes, but before we go there, I want to introduce the newest member of our staff, Ms. Najia Chikir. And Najia introduced herself to you via email this week, but I want to introduce her now. She's been hired as our Chief of Staff and, you know, part of her role is to help us create that infrastructure and the order that we've been talking about during our board meetings, during our strategic planning. So her role's going to be very specific in that area. And she has a wealth of knowledge and background in being a Chief of Staff and working in different capacities around the city. So I'm welcoming her to the team. And Najia, if you want to say a few words to the board, or board, if you want to say a few words to her, I just wanted to do that now.
Thank you, Damon. Najia, floor is yours.
Hello, everyone. It's such a pleasure to be with the organization. I am looking forward to structuring these meetings so that access is on point. You guys receive your meeting minutes and draft agendas on time. I am very experienced in this background. We do have two stars on our team. That is Ms. Townsend and Ms. Mickey, and I'm going to be collaborating with them as well. If you guys, in the meantime, can do me a favor, and that is if you have any questions, please send them directly to me. I introduce myself. That is my email. We want to make this as fruitful as possible for you guys. And by providing the meeting minutes and packet earlier, give you time to actually review so that we can have some actually in-depth conversation. So like I said, I am very honored and pleased to be with this organization, and I look forward to working with you all. Thank you much.
Thank you, Naj. We're happy to have you on board. And so I'm looking for some great things out of you. All right.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, anybody else? Okay, I'm not going back to the Green Coast Enterprises. Damon, you want to kick it off?
Yes, so to give the board a reminder of some of the conversations we've had around expanding our reach to the community and being accessible, we've talked about having satellite offices around New Orleans in different target areas. So opportunities will come about. We're in the business of talking to a lot of developers around the city at this moment about a variety of projects. And sometimes we get presented with opportunities to play a role as a tenant or a partner. And we've been talking to Green Coast Enterprises along with NHS, one of the top community or housing counseling agencies that we've worked with over the last few years about a project that they're working on and how we might fit in. So I thought it was fitting that we bring this to the board so that you can hear about the opportunity. And we could get your opinion and feedback before the staff went any further as it relates to identifying satellite opportunities. So, you know, this is one of many which we expect around the city. But they're going to come in different shapes and sizes. But this particular one is being led by a development team. And that we've invited that development team here to discuss it. So I'll turn it over to Gina and Amy so that you could talk more about what's going on with the project on Forestry.
All right. So Gina, I'm Amy Baptiste with Neighborhood Housing Services. For those of you that don't know, Neighborhood Housing Services has been around for over four years, providing housing counseling services, rehab, one-stop shop for homeownership, and helping people with credit, becoming first-time homebuyers. You know, we run the gamut of everything, community development. And we are proud to say that NHS started on Foret Street when many people were afraid to walk on Foret Street. And some of you know that and remember that history. And it was because of the work that NHS did on Foret Street that Foret is becoming the street that you see today. And we're very proud of the work that NHS did. And a lot of people don't know because NHS, you know, nonprofits do work and they don't have time to write it down and do all the stuff on social media that didn't exist then, that exists now. They say that Foret Street brought the Foret Street Festival to the community and then gave it over to the community to make it what it is. And it was the attention that NHS brought to Foret that made it what it is. And now we're ready to take it to a different level. And we're very excited about where we are, where our vision is taking us now. And of course, we always want our strong partners to be with us because we all know at this table that a lot of people, regardless of all of the great things that have happened in our city, all of the great opportunity, all of the, all of the many, many, many low-hanging fruit that we see from trees. And Damon, you can tell me to shut up when you get ready because you know I'll preach all day. I am a preacher's daughter. There are many people in our city that still have not been able to take advantage of the opportunities that are out there in terms of homeownership, owning a piece of land where you live. And we know that that is wealth building. We understand that you need to own where you live. That is how you build wealth, and we understand that. And when you look at the numbers, and Andrenika, you know this better, and I relate, and I rely on you, our advocacy person, a lot for those numbers. We have lost a lot of ground in terms of African Americans in this city, working folks in this city in terms of homeownership. So we have proposed a new project on Foret Street. And part of this project is to stabilize NHS because one of the things that we talk about at NHS is monetizing the mission. You know, a lot of, a lot of people don't like to, will say that nonprofits shouldn't make money. Well, in order to move a mission forward, you have to have resources. It's very important to have resources. It's very important to have revenue. So part of this project started as we had a great big asset, and Gina, I'll turn it over to you in a minute, on Foret Street is the one big asset we had left, and it's 4528 Foret Street. And many people wanted to buy it. A lot of folks wanted to get NHS off the street. We served our purpose and they're ready for us to go. And we knew that if we could take that asset and turn that asset into something that could help stabilize and sustain NHS, could be something that could generate revenue over the long term, not just the short term, right? Over the long term, but then also provide a unique opportunity to look at and address homeownership in a different way. And to address some of the problems and the challenges that we see in homeownership in New Orleans and in the Gulf South region. Then we sought a good partner. And Green Coast was that partner that came to the table to talk about how can we address homeownership? And how can we think about addressing things through the built environment while we still try to address increasing minimum wage, making it a living wage? There are many things that we are trying to advocate for, but we think that we have at least started to tap into addressing some of the shortfall through the built environment. So Gina, I'm going to turn it over to you. Gina Lamachia with Green Coast is our project manager. And she's going to introduce the project to you, and then we can go from there to give you an idea. But I just wanted to tell you a little bit about NHS for those of you who didn't know. You all didn't know.
Yeah, yeah, we, yes, we all should know. Absolutely. But thank you for that refresher and for the work that you all have been doing.
Thank you. And I appreciate, I appreciate Finance New Orleans. Y'all have been such a, a great partner to us. Damon will call me and I will bug Damon all the time. He doesn't seem to mind. But that, you know, he has been a great support to what we do, and he really thinks out of the box, and the staff does. And it has been a great partnership. And we love seeing the folks come through the pipeline. And, and they are very excited. We've seen more people during the pandemic. Believe it or not, the numbers have increased during the pandemic because folks had time.
Yeah.
And they had access because we are virtual. So we're very excited about that opportunity to expand virtually. So that when we go back to in-person, now we've extended virtually because we had to.
That's right.
The one blessing, the one. Out of that, right? All right, Gina, I'll turn it over to you so you can introduce the project.
So I'm going to apologize in advance, only when I'm being recorded on Zoom, because my dog likes to bark. So she's in the background, and I'm sorry about that.
I understand. I have too.
The fun challenges of working from home. So I'm going to see if I can share my screen. Can y'all see it? Yep, great. So Green Coast has been working with NHS to redevelop 4528 Street since, I believe, late 2017, early 2018. And we have always come up with the idea of, over the parking lot, we wanted to build the first mixed-income net-zero condominiums in the Gulf South. So we are still working on doing that. We have actually already pre-sold two condominiums. And one of them is, is one of the affordable units. And I, what has changed in our project a couple of times is the commercial building. We initially, hold on, let me see if I can yell it real quick. If I pet her while I talk, it'll be much quieter. You'll be able to understand me. So what's changed a little bit? We initially came through and started talking about having, bringing a grocery store to Foret Street. But about the same time we started having those conversations, Rouse's bought the former Junior League building across the street. So we spent a lot of time together working with Green Coast and NHS, trying to figure out what, what was a need in the neighborhood? And what could we do together that would make the most sense? And eventually, we really came up with a one-stop shop for homeownership. So we're very excited about this. So let's see. So just a little bit of our team. So we've got NHS and Green Coast. Chase Marshall is designing the building. Landis will be doing the construction, and Delisha Boyd is doing the commercial broker, the commercial and residential brokerage. All right, so the building, if y'all recall, is this blue building here. It's the corner Kate is in Foret, so we're right next to Company Burger. And that diagonally across the street from Rouse's, and a block away, or two blocks away from Oshner Baptist.
So for those of you that remember Public House, the Bar, if you're not familiar, and just jump in at any time. And, and it is the building that NHS was in hosting classes. We moved across the street while this is going on. But that's the, the big blue building that's sitting there with a vacant parking lot beside it is, is that building, for those of you.
So as you're saying, we wanted to build a homeownership center. So we are finishing the last final dots and crossing the Ts on our lease with Credit Human. And they are going to have their financial health center on the first floor of the building and help to underwrite a shared collaborative space that will be adjacent to a cafe. Delisha Boyd will be having her, one of her, an office in the building so homeowners can come in and actually buy a house and pick, figure out their property. NHS is going to have a conference room and programming in the building. So this is where their homeownership classes are going to take place. And they're also going to have a smart screen so they can begin to do more virtual programming through this conference room. Maildat is a new corporation that's becoming, but it's going to be a mail services accounting firm within the building. And so it'll be a place, if you're on Foret Street, you can go send your mail, or the residents can go and send their mail and get packaged. And Sweet Legacy Cafe. Additionally, we are hoping to have some presence from the City of New Orleans as far as a permitting office in the building. And we're talking with a couple of title companies about being in the building. So really, you can identify your property in this building, figure out your financing, establish credit, figure out how to buy a house, all within this building. You never have to leave. So we're very excited about its concept and would really love to see Finance New Orleans in here as well.
So I'm going to jump in, go back, I'm going to go back to a couple of things, and then I'll give a minute for questions. So first of all, on the commercial building, and then I want you to tell people what net zero is because I think that's important, right? Credit Human is a credit union out of San Antonio, Texas. It's like a $5 billion credit union out of San Antonio. So this is the first time that New Orleans will see a credit union of this magnitude land in the city. And the one thing, well, there are two things. The CEO of Credit Human graduated from Tulane. And when we met with Steve, the thing that got him is when we talked about affordable housing, because that is where his passion is. That is what he wants to see happen in New Orleans. So it was just, it was not just about bringing a bank in as an anchor tenant. It's not like a mall. This is not what this is about. Everything in this building is about supporting homeownership, small business, minority-owned, people that understand community. Credit Human calls their locations Financial Wellness Centers. They're very hands-on. So they've been talking to our staff about how people come in NHS. What does our intake look like? You know, how do we pull credit scores? How, you know, it is not, it is not like anything that we normally experience with lenders. So I wanted you to understand like how they operate. They're one of the, they're like the fifth largest financier of modular housing in the country because they see that as an affordable tool. They do a lot of things throughout Texas, because that's where they are, and other parts of the country around affordable housing. So I'm really excited about that. Sweet Legacy Cafe, African-American female who was a PhD, who has a model that is teaching young people about business. So you know, everything in this space is really geared toward a teaching component, a modeling of owning a business, and how do you do it? Maildat, female-owned, new small business that got funding from SBA to launch and is ready to go. You know, so all of this is really new and interesting. And then they'll all be in a space with a big lender that, that can then help them, right? Because we know what happens with small businesses, especially the new ones, where you don't have that lender that can help you understand the pitfalls, that you can't get that advice from, they will fail within the first five years. Damon, you're the, you're the, you're the finance brain. You know it better than me, right? So that is the point of the cafe of having these people in the space is that we want people to be able to come in and get information that they need. So I wanted to be clear on who the folks are. So this is why I need, I want Finance New Orleans there. When we, when we started the conversation, I always ask Damon to be in this space because I think it is important to have you in the community, in a place on a bus line, right next to the hospitals, right off of Clayborne. It's Uptown. It's where people are. And it's on the newest, hottest street in New Orleans, where I don't want to see it turn into magazine that's all shopping. I want it to remain a corridor that is dedicated to the lives and, and the, the living activities of people. Because, you know, though I'm excited that there's a grocery store, I don't know how I'm excited, how excited I am about Rouse's right now. But I'm excited about a grocery store because there was a food that, you know, we have a desert there. Junior League serves a purpose for working families. That thrift store serves a purpose for working families in that community. So we don't want to lose those nuances of things that families need in that interior, you know, there. So anyway, you can keep going.
Now, I thought there are some great points, and I think the only thing I wanted to add.
Questions at this point?
I would say, Amy, the one last thing is the CEO of Credit Human talks a lot about the rigorous training that their employees go through and are specifically looking for people who are business-minded and creative to work with our community.
And very specific in asking us about people that we know locally that could join their team. So they've been very adamant about who is here, who is here, who is here. You know, people that look like the folks they're serving. And that is sort of new too, when we can all, you know, that is not common, that folks don't come in and bring all their own people. So they, and they've been down here a lot. So that, that is actually a very good point. Any questions on this part? Anybody? Don't be shy. So the other idea is that we'd like to see Finance New Orleans have its board meetings there so people can see you. Ganoha, when Andrenika come over with our smaller board and have her meetings there so that people can begin to see and touch these folks in a different way. Because if they're passing by and they see you on the green screen, they see you streaming live on YouTube like you're doing now as they're walking or they're sitting in the cafe, that's how people begin to understand how to engage in community because they're looking at you, right? And they can walk up to you and they can see you, or they can sit there while they're drinking coffee and ask questions and engage with you in a different way than, you know, than they normally would have access. So that's the idea of the NHS boardroom with green screen and really high-tech, the ability to record and do whatever you want to do. Okay, Gina.
I have a question.
Yep, sure.
How do we ensure that the lender within the building remains competitive? And in the sense that I, I want the community, being that this is a one-stop shop, most people would likely opt for whatever is in the building. So how do we ensure that the lender is giving these people fair and competitive prices?
Well, the, the counseling agency can't steer, so we can offer them options. And just because they're in the building, they will have to show them other options, which will, yeah. They can't just say, oh, look, it, it's despite the fact that it's convenient, look at the numbers. And that is one of the things that NHS does really well, making sure people understand their options. So it'll be convenient, but the, the bank will have to, the rates will have to be competitive in order for the families to take advantage of it.
And, and they have their own regulators that they have to answer to, to, and, and to remain relevant and competitive in the marketplace. They have to be driven to provide, you know, the options. But Andrenika is right on point. We do not steer.
Okay. So providing options would be the remedy or solution?
Which is what we do now. You know, when people come through our program, they have a list of lenders, a list of realtors, a list of home inspectors. You know, the lists go on and on, and people can choose.
I would say it's a very thorough list. I refinanced my home right before the pandemic this year. And I went to Amy first to figure out who to talk to. I mean, I know all the stuff. I know lots of phone numbers I can call. But I wanted to go through the program and see what it was like. I, and I got a piece of paper with 20 names on it. And then we're continuing to go through the process.
So the lender that would be in that, in that building would be one of the names on this, this list?
Yes.
Okay.
Probably, yes. Along with, you know, all the normal lenders that we have, you know, throughout the city that are reputable lenders, that are reputable lenders. Reputable lenders.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions, board members?
I, I actually do, just, um. So I guess the question, it would be useful, maybe not for this call, but you know, as part of due diligence is to compare. Yes, we've historically, the finance authorities historically has worked with different banks around the city. And so I can't recall truthfully us working with a credit union. So the idea of those is kind of comparing apples to apples where I've got to think that in some instances, a credit union would be preferable in certain situations. So it'd be useful kind of to, to know what those scenarios would be. Are there any limits to what they can and can't do? Maybe there's things that they can do that, that banks either are not willing or, or less inclined to do. It'd be kind of, the idea of those is, you know, if we're, we've got products, it's nice to, to understand who, who, with whom we can work with.
Okay.
And I don't, maybe it's self-evident, Giselle's like you, I, I don't know enough about credit unions, quite frankly.
And I think that's, we can have a second call about that. But I would say personally, I was raised in a household that banked at a credit union. And so every loan I've ever had, but my current mortgage, because I don't live in the state where the credit union came from, has gone through a credit union. And I still hold a bank account there because it has the best interest rates, even just on a savings account. I get a percent back every month. And even if it's $2, I have a share of the payments or ownership of the bank.
And like, are they, do they have, I mean, are there financial caps limits as far as what credit unions can do? I don't know. I've got to think that the, I guess it was FDIC insurance, the money that's kept there. I don't know, it's just, it's, it'd be useful. I mean, in many ways, I'm ignorant. It's, it's, it'd be helpful to know more.
Sure. So we'll get some information, I'm going to tell you, and specific information about Credit Human because it is huge. It's huge. So it was formerly San Antonio Credit Union, if you're familiar. They changed the name to Credit Human because of, you know, trying to break down barriers of people not wanting to be banked. You know, trying to, to help people to become more immersed into the community. One other thing I want to talk about, about this project is the idea of net zero and what we're doing on the residential side. And Gina, if you'll just touch on, on that piece, because that's important to talk about why this project, too, on the residential piece.
Yeah, so this project is twofold. So we have our homeownership center, and then we have 18 condominiums that we're building above the parking lot. So they'll still be parking on the ground level. But we are trying to create a building that actually is in line with Finance New Orleans values of survivability and sustainability. So we are building the building to be net zero. So that means we have solar panels on the roof of both buildings. And we have done an energy model of the design of the building and calculated approximately how much energy all of the residents are supposed to use. And that should even out that all the residents or the owners of the condominiums pay for is the net metering fee to Energi. So they suddenly have a Energi bill that is $0 on the energy use side, but there's a fee, so that's going to be $50 a month. Lower water bill. The building is going to be, it's raised higher, and it's going to be stronger and fortified. So we're looking at insurance premiums actually decreasing as well. So what we're trying to do is actually decrease all the operating costs. So you know what your bills are going to be every month, and you can actually afford a house on a corridor that's bustling. You're muted.
It goes back to the idea of creating a model, and we hope this becomes a model that can become more. It goes back to the idea of creating a model, and we hope this becomes a model that can become more affordable as as others are created. That in, as we continue to try to address increasing income for working people. What can we do to decrease the things that cost them the most money, that takes the most of their income? In the South, what is it? Utility bills. So if I know that I've got a flat rate of fifty dollars a month, think about that, think about the summer months. Think about what that means in terms of that thirty percent, and and Andre Nika, you can, you know the numbers better than I do. But think about what that means if we can make this model work and replicate that across the South. And really drive those numbers down of creating this flat utility cost for people, because it then will help. And it can then spill over into single family home development as well. And that's, this is the kind of thing that we are exploring in this project. And, uh, I think we're going to use some of the Finance New Orleans, um, products on the residential side too. So it's a comprehensive approach to trying to create this model of affordability from a different approach. So it's NHS again, a forestry doing something different that we hope will spark interest. And and it for to other developers to do it in other places in our city and in in the Gulf South. And we want you to be a part of it, I need you there, and I'm going to need you there whether you decide to come or not. Because you know, I'm going to hound you to death, and I'm going to be asking Damon to come every day, even if you're not physically in the building, but I do want a kiosk there, and I need you there. I don't want you downtown, I want you in the, in the community where we are.
Got it. Thank you so much.
I appreciate it though, thank you.
For this great presentation, uh, board members, um, this is just a presentation right now, right? We're not taking any business on this, okay?
Yeah, I think I would add one more final piece.
Okay.
Um, and the next, it's really, let's talk about the next step. So our last conversation, we decided that there are a couple of different ways Finance New Orleans could be in this building. We think it makes the most sense for Finance New Orleans and the city to co-locate. And have a, an office for permitting, but we also think then being a part of the collaborative space. And if you want to have a kiosk there, if you want to be a part of helping to underwrite the conference room for NHS. There are lots of different mechanisms, uh, and we are opening to have, we're open to having a conversation about what makes the most sense of your presence in the building.
Got it.
Absolutely.
I have another question, I don't know if you can answer already, um, how many condominiums will there be?
There are eighteen right now, though we do have the opportunity to build an additional set of residential in a future development on the backend. So right now, there are eighteen. So call Delicia, we'd love to have you over there.
Yeah.
Or send people our way, we want people to come through NHS, because we really want folks to have the opportunity to own on Farret. Because there are very few opportunities to own, as you know, drive down Farret.
Absolutely.
We want folks to own on Farret, and I cannot stress that enough, so please send folks to NHS so we can get them ready.
You mentioned that, uh, two of them sold already?
We have contracts on two.
Okay, what did they sell for?
Are we allowed to disclose that?
Are you?
Because we have purchase agreements, I'm not sure, I don't want Delicia to get me, y'all know Delicia.
Yeah, don't let me get you in trouble.
Yeah, I don't know, because they're purchase agreements, I'm not sure.
Amy, and what's all our, what you can give a range, because if you're pre-selling them, that is public.
Yeah, you can provide maybe the listing price, I don't know if you have a list, that would be appropriate.
Yes, if you give me a couple of seconds, I can.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I'm going to stop sharing.
Um, and how would somebody get the information, um, since you all are pre-selling it? So how would somebody like get the information on, um, how to purchase?
Delicia Boyd, or send them to, you know, or send them to me, let me, let me send you all some information.
Okay.
I'll do that, I'll send you the link. There is a website, so I'll send you the link to that, um, after this call, I'll make sure to get it to Damon, and he can send it over. Looks like somebody sent it right there.
I think Gina put it in, yeah.
Gina just put it in there.
One, I put a Realtor.com, but it was actually the wrong one, sorry. The IP, Google forty-five twenty Farret, there's a lot of listings.
Okay.
Right here, it's one that actually reflects, so. This one was, uh, this one bedroom is two seventy-five.
So you used the second link, not the first one?
Correct.
All right, um, thank you all again, I'm sure we'll be.
Thank you.
Follow-up conversations on, on how we could, um, uh, partner with this endeavor, so.
Because y'all are a great partner, as I.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Gina.
Bye.
Yeah.
All right, um, we will, uh, move on to the approval of December tenth, um, board minutes. Um, I believe Naj, uh, sent the minutes over, um, for those of.
Let me know if you can see him, Ms. Banks, I'm sharing my screen.
Yes.
Now I have them up, thank you.
Yes, thank you, you can see me.
And if there are any amendments to this or changes, just let me know, and we can have those approved at the next board meeting. So give you time to review them all.
Okay, um. What what's your pleasure on board? Have you had a chance to review the minutes, um, prior, uh, to the meeting? If you want to, uh, review, we could save those to the next meeting, or we could, um.
Just, Giselle, if you, if you give me one second, let me just look really quickly.
Okay, thank you.
I'm trying to see, um, what the action items were.
Wait, a few high level action items I know were on the agenda with the, or the budget.
Right.
And, uh, we had two projects that were, uh, closed. I'm not, I I think we had already taken final action on one of those. Uh, we took action at least on at least one in December.
Yeah. Do you see anything in the minutes? I mean, it's, well, I mean, it's a thick set of minutes, but, um. Basically straightforward with there are two action items, I just don't see. Do you actually see, uh? Like a vote resolution? I don't, I'm just wondering.
So for instance, if you go under, right, right here, we are looking at the pilot for Peace Lake Towers project. And then we go to the fiscal preliminary operating budget for discussion. It appears that there was an approval, if you go to item C. So the Cs, if there wasn't any public comment, if there were any items of approval, it would have been the last item action. On the agenda item.
I'm just wondering.
Well, yeah, um, but, um, there's a, I think Wade and I are going to the same place.
Yeah.
The budget did not pass unanimously.
Okay, um. Let's go ahead and just, uh, stay with this to February, um, send, um, uh, Najja and, uh, Elizabeth, uh, the corrections. Uh, to the minutes, um, and then we will go ahead and amend the minutes and pass these, uh.
Okay.
Great.
Because there may be more, um.
Yeah.
So just in case, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, I will move on to the Finance and Investments Committee Report. Approval of September twenty-second Finance and Investment Committee Minutes.
That, that actually happened at the committee meeting.
Indeed, okay, so we'll.
If that's on.
Doesn't need to be.
No, it doesn't.
On the, okay, um, let's move on to the market report.
All right, um, I'll take that, um, good afternoon, everyone. So as it relates to the market, um, we've ended a year that contained a lot of historic events. You know, we've seen a global pandemic, uh, we've seen a contentious election, we've seen a historic recession. We've seen civil unrest, and then we've seen, you know, a bear market, and then we've seen the market kind of rebound. And so, you know, all of that pretty much produced a lot of volatility and uncertainty in twenty twenty. Um, and pretty much sums up the year overall. Um, despite that, you know, there's been a strong start to the year. Um, you know, just from the, just from a macro level, um, and and measuring the the e- the market by the the equities. But, um, that's still changing week by week, so we can still probably expect this uncertainty and this volatility to continue. Uh, we're already seeing investors become a little worried about lockdowns that could be here to stay for a while. As a result of the vaccine distributions that's falling short of expectations, and then we're seeing some of these new strands being detected. Um, so that story is continued to, continuing to evolve, uh, the story locally is also evolving. Um, as we've seen, recent data show that New Orleans homeowners are the highest among other major US cities where homeowners are at risk for, for closures. So, uh, we're seeing a lot of people in New Orleans that are behind, um, and this is leading, a leading indicator to, you know, of course, uh, trouble ahead. On a, you know, overall, the the jobs market in New Orleans is, the unemployment rate is nine point eight. Um, the most recent, that's down eleven percent from the prior month, but it's still up, um, four point six from, uh, November of two thousand nineteen. So, um, still a lot, uh, you know, the New Orleans market is ideally detached from, from the major markets there. Uh, we have seen President, President-elect Biden, um, bring a little hope to the situation. He recently announced the one point nine trillion dollar, excuse me, trillion dollar emergency relief plan. That will hopefully help steer us out of this pandemic and help maybe mitigate some of these forthcoming crises, um, especially in New Orleans. So, um, you know, with the newly Democratic-controlled Senate, hopefully that'll pave a way to hopefully getting a deal done and getting a deal done fast. On a, the municipal market side, once again, strong start to the year, a lot of good demand, there's light, light supply on a new issues. But a lot of that strong demand is driven by the expectations of, of a fiscal relief for state and local governments. Mortgage rates have been increasing slightly, um, it's kind of a, almost like a flight to quality from, you know, the bond market to the equity. So, um, we're starting to see rates creep up a little bit, um, we've seen a lot of record lows last year in the mortgage space. Um, but they're creeping up, and so we have seen some increases in, uh, refinancing. So, uh, there was a twenty percent increase last week compared to the previous week. So a lot, a lot of people trying to, you know, get in before those rates start to climb. So, you know, overall, just a lot on the table that are making, you know, investors nervous. But, you know, the spotlight ideally is on Congress to get this deal done, and, you know, the ability to distribute, to distribute these expected vaccines. So that's what I have on the market, any questions there? All right.
No, no questions.
All right, well, I'll, I'll move on to the Financial Status Report. Uh, this report, uh, provides an update as of year-to-date, November of twenty twenty. Uh, you'll see page one of the Financial Status Report, uh, shows our revenues and expenses. Uh, our revenues year-to-date are a hundred and seventy-one thousand to a budget of a hundred and ninety-one thousand. Uh, relatively slightly short of budget, um, on the expense side, we're favorable, one point three to a budget of one point seven. So there's three hundred and ninety-three dollars of favorability there. Uh, moving on to page two, this kind of dives into the, the revenue component. Um, the driver, uh, you know, the driver here is the multifamily program income. Um, I would like to note that we, we did close on two pilots in December. Um, the, the estimated amount from that is roughly fifty thousand, so, um, that will bring us, you know, over our projected budget for the year. And, uh, ideally overall, on the revenues, we should be right on target, um, and hitting our, our projected budget as well. Next page kind of dives into the, the expenses, uh, the same story, that it has been, uh, favorability. Driven by the salaries and employees' benefit line, the, uh, marketing and advertising line, and the administrative, uh, expenses line. The next page shows a, uh, historical trend of our revenues and expenses. Revenues are within averages, our expenses, uh, you'll see we had a jump in, in November, and that's directly tied to satisfying, uh, you know, contracts and and year-end invoices that that have come in. So that's to, to be expected, that's more of a timing issue there.
Byron, I'm sorry to interrupt, please share your screen, if you're able to.
Oh, okay.
Not enabled, let us know so we can get you enabled.
All right, can you see it?
Yep.
All right. So this is where I was, uh, in explaining the, just the trending, a historical trending revenues and expenses. As I was mentioning, uh, kind of revenues are kind of flowing within averages. And then if you look here at expenses, uh, we got a, a, an increase here, uh, and as I mentioned, as related to, uh, that's timing on, on invoices and satisfying, uh, year-end contracts. Looking at the Pathways Portfolio, uh, total revenues year-to-date, um, is a hundred and sixty-four thousand. Uh, there was in November, a, uh, sale of the Dorchester property, uh, so that, uh, brought in revenue to that fund. On the expense side, uh, we're at thirty-six thousand year-to-date there. Nothing much to report on the balance sheet year-over-year, uh, it's pretty, pretty stable given, uh, minimal activity. So the composition remains the same. And then here we have our summary of cash, uh, you'll see we're at ten point eight. Uh, the prior report showed ten point nine, so that, uh, you know, that slight decrease is, is directly tied to, uh, you know, the, the. Expense and revenue components budgeted for the year, so, um, that's within our expected range. And that's what I have for the Financial Status Report, any questions, comments?
No, I don't have any, um, board members. Thank you so much, Byron.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right. Yep, uh, thanks for sharing the screen too. Uh, we'll move on to the Programs Committee Report.
Good evening, board members, how y'all doing?
Great.
Um, good. So we'll go into the December twenty twenty Programs Report, um, do you all have a copy?
No, can you share your screen, please?
Let's see, I'm on my phone, let's see.
Oh.
I probably can do it, I'll let you. No, so I can't do it from my phone, so I don't.
Thank you, Bianca, um, you could just, yeah, thank you.
You got it. Okay. They got it up. Okay, so good. So going into page two, we'll talk about the Community Support Fund. This is basically the demographic report for twenty twenty. I'll just do a quick, few quick highlights on it. Total amount approved year-to-date forty-two thousand four hundred. As you can see, we've broken out the demographics by applications received by council district. As you can see, we've received the most from council district E. Uh, average age is thirty-nine. Goes into the gender, uh, female, we've received the highest percentage of applicants from female, seventy-nine percent. Marital status, uh, you can see we've received the highest number of applicants from singles, ninety-five percent. And basically the employment status unemployed, we've received seventy-two percent, um, percentage of applicants from unemployment. Uh, moving on to page three, ongoing, these is our demographic reports from our single family. This kind of highlights the origination summary by Linda, talks about the loans, uh, loans done by each lender, the amount and the percentage. I'll give come quick numbers that we did in twenty twenty. So far, we've issued three point two million in, uh, twenty twenty in loan, in, uh, mortgages for twenty twenty. Average credit score for twenty twenty was a seven oh four. Uh, in down payment assistance, we've issued a hundred and sixty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars in program funding down payment assistance for twenty twenty. Uh, so just moving along, this is all demographic reports, kind of highlights annual income, talks about household size, loan amount and also purchase price. Uh, moving on to page, page twenty-five. This kind of highlights our developer pipeline. Yeah, you can scroll, keep scrolling down all the way to the developer pipeline. Yeah, up one page. So this first page developer pipeline just kind of contemplating all the projects that are currently, uh, you know, that may be seeking a pilot. Uh, however, on the second page, it talks about the projects that we've currently seen and given applications to. So mainly gives the project status. As you can see, these applications, it kind of gives the status of where they're at, uh, within, um, the scope. So basically they've received the pre-application. They went for it before the underwriting committee. Underwriting committee has approved them and receive a full application. As you can notate, we've closed on a Peace Lake Towers project. We've also closed on a McDonald nineteen project. We're expecting to close on Shefmi tour project this month. So this, uh, second report just kind of gives you the percentage of where each project is that's currently in the finals, uh, pipeline. So these are active projects that we're actively, um, you know, pursuing at the moment.
Wow.
And.
That's a lot.
Yeah, so that kind of sums up the, uh, programs report for December twenty twenty. Any questions, board members?
No, uh, great report. Um, uh, well, I do have a question. So on the, um, pipeline, and I'm sorry, I was on the reports, on the pipeline, um, in total, uh, project costs. Um, and I guess, uh, do we have it, um, do we have an idea of what we can expect? Like, uh, forecasting out like for the next, like, uh, few months? Um, a percentage of projects that will get started, you know? Um,
Uh, as it relates to dollar amount, Chairman Banks, Chairman Banks.
A dollar amount, a number of.
Yeah, so probably if we do number, right now we have about maybe five that are still active, active that will probably be underseen within the next few months.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right, good. Thank you, Bianca.
You're welcome.
And one more note for this pipeline. What you see on the screen are mostly affordable projects.
Mm-hmm.
I say mostly, all, all of these are affordable housing projects. There's still the pipeline of inclusionary zoning projects that we have not started to develop. We've had conversations with market rate developers or commercial developers in the area who are going to take advantage of that inclusionary zoning program.
Okay.
Once we add those projects to this list, it will grow. I don't know about how much. Um, I suspect that affordable housing will still make up the, the majority of our pipeline. But as inclusionary zoning is developed in the city, this pipeline will get bigger.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. All right, um, any questions, comments for Bianca? All right, moving right along. Uh, Damon, Executive Management, uh, report.
Yeah, the only thing I want to share here is that we were working on new, a new set of reports. Um, Byron and Bianca just went through the same formats that we used last year. We're going to be updating those, um, so that you'll have access ahead of time, where, that you'll also have uh, clear metrics that we'll start covering in the meetings. We're going to play a little bit or experiment with the, the meeting agenda or format, just to make sure that we're covering our ground and being efficient with our time. So, um, we'll, we'll start coming back to you in February with some of these strategic, uh, changes, the strategic plan. We'll have that finalized by February and we'll present that to you, uh, for your review. And that, and once you sign off on it, we'll start promoting that in the community. And we'll start putting those action plans in, in place. So twenty twenty-one, uh, is the first year of this ten-year vision. So, you know, we expect to be laying a lot of groundwork this year, like we did last year. But we also expect activity, investment activity this year, as you've seen with the pilot projects and some of the other programs like the green mortgage, uh, and more bond deals, uh, for housing and infrastructure. So we expect to see some of that activity this year and next. Um, but we're, we're just going to keep coming back to you with rolling updates and, and making incremental progress. So the first thing we're going to do is focus on some of these administrative tasks, um, that can trip us up when we get into these Zoom meetings. Uh, with technology is, you know, it can go up or down. So we got to have better contingency plans. So I commit that we'll be better prepared and organized, uh, for these meetings and you'll have everything ahead of time. And we'll run at a more efficient pace.
Yeah, no, um, uh, thank you for that, Damon. Um, uh, we do appreciate, um, I know that y'all making some changes and uh, trying different things out. So I understand that things, um, happen, you know, a kind of trial and error. So, um, thank you, uh, for just making sure that, um, you know, we're trying to do the best job that we can to get, uh, board members information and, uh, figuring out the right, um, uh, format, right? And how we can be, um, uh, most, uh, effective, uh, to help you all. Um, I do want to, um, I would be remiss if I didn't, uh, uh, mention, of course, you know, um, budget, budget, budget and, uh, making sure that, uh, we are monitoring that, um, very carefully. Um, you know, we're back in phase one, um, point something, I don't know what this is revised phase, wherever we are, right? I mean, we're going backwards instead of going forward right now. So just making sure that we're keeping, um, our eyes on that and making sure that, uh, we are being prudent with the resources of the organization, um, is of utmost importance. Um, uh, to me, I want to make sure that we have the, um, ability to weather, uh, downtimes. And so, uh, just making sure that we're being really good, um, stewards of our resources, um, is at the top of my mind always. So I just wanted to make that comment, you know, um, I'll be the one to keep making that comment. Um, uh, just so that it stays top of mind for all of us.
I'm just doing it.
Thank you.
And then the only other thing to mention, Vice Chair Banks is, uh, Johnson Banks is that we have um, elections, board elections that need to be handled by next month.
Yes.
Well, that'll be on the February's meeting agenda. Um, so we need to have nominations from this board for who you would like to occupy the officer positions, uh, with your chair, vice chair and secretary treasurer.
Okay. All right, I'll do in order. Thank you so much for that, uh, reminder, uh, board members. If you are interested in serving, um, in any of those capacities, please let us know. Um, if you're just going to be nominated and we can discuss it, um, as a board. So, um, looking forward to some energized and energetic, um, leadership in this new year. Uh, we have a lot of work to do. Uh, the staff has, um, provided us with a lot of projects. You've just seen the report. And so, um, want to make sure that we are staying, that we stay engaged and that we stay, um, uh, in support of our staff, so. With that being said, um, is there, uh, any other business?
No other business from the staff.
Uh, public comment?
No public comment at this time.
Mr. Tom, is she trying to say something?
I was looking at the screen. I'm sorry. I'm just leaning in.
Oh, no, you're okay. I didn't want to miss you. Okay.
No, not at all.
All right, thank you. So no public comment. If that is all, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second that.
Thank you. Um, others in favor, this is for my, uh, my attorney Jay. Please, Mr. Tom, I'm gonna say an aye.
Aye. Did somebody burst it?
I know, I was, I'll, I'll make the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. We're gonna get it right eventually, Jay. Um, it's been moved and second, um, others in favor, so I'm gonna say an aye. Not hearing any other meetings adjourned. See you all next month.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.